Right into our regular council meeting of Tuesday, July 11th, 2017. Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Ceraci?
Here.
Mr. Roden?
Here.
Ms. McPherson?
Here.
Mr. Scafidi?
Here.
Mr. Steele?
Here.
Mr. Fury?
Here.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Here.
Thank you, and Mr. Scafidi will lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
Father, we seek your guidance for the business that is before us in planning for the future of the city of Twinsburg. Give us vision. Guide us to make decisions that are not self-serving but for the betterment of our community so we can continue to move in a positive direction. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from June 27th. Are there any corrections? Anyone? Let it show that the minutes will be approved as written. Thank you. Audience participation.
First, we have Kathy Turrell-Waldron. I'm supposed to say my name in answers.
That's correct.
Jessica. Hi, I'm Kathy Turrell-Waldron. I live at 1659 Glenwood here in Twinsburg. And I just wanted to say, good evening, Mayor Yates and council. To begin, I'd like to thank this council, all of you, as well as Mayor Yates and each and every department for your continued commitment to this community. It is appreciated more than you know. I know there's a lot of behind-the-scenes things that you guys do, and it's hard being a public official and it's not always appreciated, so I want to let you know that I appreciate everything you do to start. I attended the Fourth of July Pops concert, and I wanted to recognize the outstanding level of community which I felt. I was able to take or be there with some of my family, and it was just a pleasure to see our safety forces in action. Our Parks and Recs Department is just hands-down, some of the, probably the best in the state, and I know you guys know that. And I wanted to let you know, as a citizen, how much I appreciated being able to be a part of that and let you know what I, how, you know, I felt it was. Your leadership is a direct reflection of the success of these entities. I know you always don't hear the positives, so I wanted to repeat that. Your leadership is a direct reflection of the success of these entities, so thank you. With my active involvement in the boosters, chamber, rotary, and other community committees, as well as the school board, athletics, buildings and grounds, recreation, and as a local business owner for 25 years, I've developed a unique set of talents. With that said, I've deeply reflected over the past several months where I felt that my gifts, my talents, my efforts could be most effective, most impactful, and most beneficial for this community. So I wanted to let you know that, as I said with deep reflection, I have decided to run for council at large. I believe that I can be a good contributor. I'm prepared to work diligently to continue the forward, positive progress that you guys have made. I'm definitely committed to the city, and my intentions are to continue to be positive, productive, and a contributor. Once again, I thank you guys for everything that you do and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Yes, next we have Bruce Baldwin.
Good evening, council. Bruce Baldwin, 3310 Cannon Road. I've seen his article in the June 21st paper about Chrysler before when he opened it up. It says some minor fixes were made to the facility. I'd like to know how, does anybody know how much that minor cost was before they opened it up?
Opened up?
Yeah, I'm reading exactly what the article said here. They said minor repair costs to the building before. I'm just curious what it cost.
What building?
What building?
The old school, my old school.
Oh.
My one-two school.
Would you say Chrysler Building?
I'm sorry.
I was going to say Chrysler.
The old brick school, I'm sorry. And then also, it really upsets me about this. I brought attention last year to 91 and 40, the backup. Sometimes it actually backs up to 82. The pollution down there, we don't have a right turn lane to hit our traffic towards Oakwood. I see it, and these cars stop, and they back up, and then when it snows, the department's good about the snow, don't get me wrong, but sometimes I've seen them stop there. I come from indigestion heaven, you know, the taco place. I didn't go there to study this. I walked out and I said, look at all these cars backed up. This is the last year I brought this attention to you. We have polluted that area so bad down there, it made it hard for people to get home. You want to get your traffic off your surface streets and onto your, and I brought this up last year. And one of the most, and another thing too, I spotted seven different cars, two cars downtown, one's got a flat tire in the park, two flat tires in the parking lot. The other one, I just hope and pray nobody's in a trunk along those cars. There's a sticker on the side, Twinsburg Police Department, but it's been there for so long, the writing's gone off the thing, the vehicle's sitting there with two flat tires. I asked retired officer from Twinsburg, I said, "Sir, I said, can you help me out in this?" I said, "That car's been there since last year." I said, "The writing is off the vehicle," because, and I said, "Don't you turn a slip in at the end of your shift?" I couldn't get an answer out of him, so I guess he didn't remember. And then I go down to Pizza Hut, they haven't mowed their lawn this year yet at Pizza Hut. And I happened to go over here, the guy trying to mow the lawn over at Comfort Suites, Comfort I believe that is. They mowed it once this year. I remember last year they did a darn good, it looked beautiful down there. I go down there now, just take a look at it, don't take my word for it. I mean, what was going on where we're not getting going on this? I mean, it looks bad, especially if somebody comes to the city and sees this, first of all, it gives a bad light on the city. And the, about the turn lane really upsets me. You put a turn lane in on Sherwin Drive to get the people in their houses, there's three turn lanes on Liberty Road, people live there. I'd like to know how many cars just stop, complete stop down there, 91, and can't go anywhere because of no right turn lane.
Where's this 91?
Which intersection?
Intersection with what?
91 and 480. Because you're going down there, there's no turn lane on the right side, the people just stop there watching the light changes, and a couple, two or three, especially if you've got a big truck going through there, you're in trouble. I didn't go down, I happened to see them, I'm walking, I said, "Look at all that traffic, these people just aren't moving."
So 480 has an entrance ramp? Is that, you're talking about 91 and 480?
Yes, or south.
Okay, going south.
Now, here's the thing, why don't you have any problem going north to 480? There is no problem going north because there's a turn lane, there is zero problem. It's really bad down, I mean, this is worse than what you think. It's all, I mean, I'm a big deal when it comes to polluting. I don't like polluters, any kind of polluters. I'll shut my lawn mower off the second I can so I don't pollute my own lawn. This has been going on down there, and I brought this up last year. And also, I maybe seen another kind of a close call, 1482, those three lights are in two lanes, people get confused. I brought that up last year, people go down there, they get confused when they're heading towards, when they're leaving towards the township, going towards Hudson, or, you know, when I'm talking about Hudson, Streetsboro. Just three lanes, three lights and two lanes, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the state losses one light per lane. Am I right, sir?
I believe you're right, yes.
I believe I am too. And I mean, that's a darn good loss. Everybody in that lane knows where they're supposed to go. I seen two close calls, a neighbor down the street mentioned, I mentioned to him, he said, "Oh yeah, people get in there, they see a light, and they think they got a left lane, but there's no left lane to go to because the guy next to them's got a left lane." And this I brought up last year. I don't, I hate to see anybody get hurt down there. And no, nothing, you know, I'm not just here to, I believe it's a safety thing, but nothing was done from last year. It's going on over. I think I came here January or February last year and mentioned this before. I don't want to see anybody get hurt down there. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baldwin, where's the car at that's tagged?
I'm not, sir, I'm not going to be a real, I'm upset about these cars, somebody is, if law not doing these cars, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm not trying to be a bad person, I hate to say no, I'll help anybody else change a flat tire on their way home, it's just I'm upset about these things. That one was there since last year, sir.
But where is it? Where is it?
I'm not going to, it's right, it's right in, there's two of them in town. Right in the vicinity of this town, there's five of them. I didn't go around looking for these, I just happened to see them. I mean, I do work part-time.
Are they in the square?
I don't drive around.
In the parking lot?
They're in a park, okay, they're in a parking lot downtown. The one's been there, had snow on it last year from, been there. The sticker's on the car, I want somebody to go look at the sticker, I don't want anybody to take my word for it.
Is it private parking lot, or?
Is it Giant Eagle?
Is it a private parking lot, or like Giant Eagle?
It's in a parking lot downtown, there's two of them in the vicinity of the parking lot downtown, close. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any others?
Yes, we have Michael Turrell.
Mr. Turrell, his time's up, come on.
Mr. Turrell?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Michael Turrell, 9930 Forest Lake Drive. I didn't know we were allowed to make announcements, but yeah, I'm running for council at large too. That's not what I came up here for, but I announced it a year and a half ago, but it's kind of old news, but, sorry, Mom and Dad, it's going to be a tough summer. No, it's going to be fine. I'm not here to speak about that, I am here to speak about the Twinsburg Bicentennial that is coming up. We have the celebration, I'm not going to give too much away for Derek, it's kind of his thing, and I don't want to steal his thunder, I don't know if he's coming in and speak tonight, but what I am speaking here on tonight is the time capsule that is going into the, well, it's to replace the time capsule that was buried on the nation's bicentennial to be dug up on the city's bicentennial, which is this year. Two weeks ago, they dug this thing up and they opened it up and retrieved some artifacts. A lot of them were, unfortunately, I'm sure you guys saw on the bulletin, were lost to time. The concrete vault was soaked with water, and, but they did recover a lot of good things out of it yet, and those are going to be on display at the Twinsburg 200 bicentennial, the Founder's Day, that's the word I was looking for, Founder's Day Celebration. So I look forward to seeing all of you up there. My son is not available this week, he is at Camp Manitok with Boy Scouts on his week-long camp out down there, so I'm kind of stepping in his place, helping push these binder sleeves to fill up for the book. I'm inviting all of council and mayor and staff and all of the residents of Twinsburg, Reminderville, and Twinsburg Township, that we can purchase these sleeves for $10 for residences, $30 for businesses. We got a big response so far out of the businesses, business community right now. They're all trying to get their little piece in history, and I'm basically telling everybody, you can like include a family picture, maybe write your own little story about Twinsburg, about where you are, what's Twinsburg like in 2017, when you came here, kind of whatever you want to put in there. You want to put a big, "Best wishes, Twinsburg," and leave it at that, whatever, but the money situation isn't really the huge deal at this point, it's trying to get as many people included into this book as possible. It's like writing a little storybook from 2017 to the residents of 40 years from now. The time capsule has been purchased at this point because there was a 10 to 14-day lead time, we wanted to make sure that we had it for the celebration. We are going to be collecting, we're still collecting artifacts. My daughter donated a pair of Crocs for the thing, which I think is kind of cool because I doubt that they'll have those, and who knows, they might have them in 40 years. Sprint donated a cell phone, which I think is one of my favorite things. We can go around and take some pictures and video around town and hope that thing comes back to life in 40 years. We'll see. So I'm basically out here, throwing it out here to try to get some people to get your name in the book, you know, as much as anything. The time capsule was purchased due to the generous donation of an anonymous donor at this point. My son, right now, I think he has like $1,200 collected right now for the time capsule, and generous donor stepped in, says he will meet what we need to to get it up to the point of getting the large time capsule. So, and then whatever contributions we collect along the way will be returned to that donor so that he's not bearing the full cost of this thing, that, you know, he's basically offsetting the cost of what it is. We have a commitment of $500 right now from Reminderville and a commitment of $500 from Twinsburg Township. My son came in and spoke with Twinsburg City Council two, three weeks ago, I can't remember last time he was up here, but, and I know you guys got to talk about that stuff. One minute. Damn, time flies. So we're looking forward to hearing, you know, from, you know, what Twinsburg City can offer for this thing, but if nothing else, as individuals, I haven't sold one to any of you guys yet, so I'd like to see some names in the book just to try to lock our place in, $30 businesses, you could put McPherson Real Estate in there, so, there you go, that's all. Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any others?
There is none.
Okay, thank you. Okay, council communication, Mr. Scafidi.
Thank you. Good evening. The Board of Zoning Appeals has not met, however, they will be meeting on July 26th right here at City Hall at 6:30. And just two quick announcements I want to make, and I'm not going to go too deep because I know probably the mayor's going to talk about it, but I attended the last two Rock the Park concerts in Building 429, which was the mayor's thought and idea to bring into town was an absolute excellent, an excellent group. Unfortunately, the night was a disaster. It rained in buckets, and buckets, and buckets, and buckets, and buckets. I can't say how much it rained. My umbrella started leaking, so, but the group was great, and I'll let the mayor talk about that. But then the Cleveland Pops Orchestra, that Monday, July 3rd, turned out to be another excellent concert. That was really well-attended and really a good concert. It was a beautiful night, the fireworks were great. So I agree, I mean, I think our Parks and Recs Department is doing a great job with everything that they put on, as well as all the other departments in the city, but those concerts are really, are really a big benefit to our city. Other than that, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Stoffer?
Okay, I do have a report for the ARB from June 15th. There was a sign approved for Maplewood Senior Living. There was a, an approval from the addition to the Finest Auto Wholesale that was approved as noted. There was also an approval of a single-family dwelling, 2434 Glenwood Drive, was approved. There was a, an approval for a home on 2060 Spring Ridge Drive by Polte. There was also, there was an approval on Meadowwood Boulevard changing exterior colors. Let's see, there was an approval for a screened-in porch on 9261 Gettysburg Drive, and an approval for a detached garage on 1912 Edgewood Drive, and approval for an enclosure on Cannon Drive, 3274 Cannon Drive, and an approval for a detached garage on Sunview Drive, 1887 Sunview Drive. And finally, there was a non-illuminated sign that was approved on 2450 Edison Boulevard. And that, oh, we also had a safety committee meeting. We talked about the fire hydrant colors, and we also had some discussion on the signage at the roundabout, and that, that's pretty much, that's all. Maybe Joanne will add to the safety committee meeting.
No, you covered it well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fury?
I attended a, on July 10th, a Twinsburg organizational meeting with the mayor and the safety forces. The next Park and Rec meeting will be on August 24th at 6:30. On August 12th, we have Relay for Life, which will be held at the square this year. If you go to Relay for Life Twinsburg, you can get all the information. It'll be from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on the square this year, which is a big change, and hoping to get some additional energy there. Also, the Rotary is sponsoring through the month of July, a Tinkers Creek River Run. The information can be found on Facebook at the Rotary Club of Twinsburg, or you can call 330-888-5276. It's held between 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. on Sunday, July 16th and July 30th, and it would start at East Idlewood, just at the park entrance near the bridge. It's $15 per person, which includes a kayak, a life jacket, an oar, and lunch. Twelve and other must be accompanied by a parent. So again, there's more information on their website, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roden?
Thank you. The next Environmental Commission meeting will be Thursday, September 14th. I'll save a little bit of time for that, but they'll be here in chambers, council's chambers, and we'll talk about that again as we get closer. And just a reminder, the annual cleanup day will be Saturday, October 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. It'll start the rec center, and we're inviting homeowner associations and different groups. We're also talking to Boy Scout troops for some ground-storing drain markers that they're going to be working with Amy Moron. And then also, the Household Hazardous Waste Recycling Center is at 1201 Graham Road in Stowe. It's open from June 1st through September 28th, on Thursdays only, from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m., so if you want to get rid of any of your hazardous waste, household hazardous waste, you can go to that center. You can call 330-374-0383 if you have any questions about that. And then, Mrs. Stoffer also covered the safety committee meeting, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Steele?
None of my committees come back.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McPherson?
I just wanted to add that the next safety meeting is November 14th. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mayor?
Thank you. Good evening, residents and everyone. Couple of things going on in town. We still watching the golf course, construction project developed. I take a tour usually once or twice a week and just find out what's going on, so you start to see walls go up, we're probably going to start to see steel coming in in the next week, so the building's starting to take form. Everything seems to be on schedule. Again, for those golfers, just bear with us, I think everything's under control right now, but there's still a lot of construction going on there. Couple of things going around town, from road program, we've got Gettysburg, Hickory Hill, and Shady Wood Lane that are being resurfaced, so those are current roads that are going on. Then we're going to move to parts of Ravenna Road, so the north part of Ravenna Road will be the next one in line. So just, I know everyone's been patient about Ravenna Road, but it's going to start here soon. The Rotary, the River Run, so I've been working with the Rotary, and this has been a great event that they've organized. It was a great turnout this past Sunday, and we had great weather, and I know that the next couple of weeks are getting booked up, so there are a few spots left, but they're meeting at Glen Metal Park, and then you get escorted over to East Idlewood, and you get about a 30 to, depends how fast you pedal, 30 to 40-minute trip down Tinkers Lane. So, but they've done a great job organizing that, and it's, you know, for those who haven't been on Tinkers Creek, it's just, it's really beautiful back there. It's really, it's not that accessible, but from a kayak, it's really, it's really beautiful property back there, and, you know, an asset of Twinsburg that you don't get to experience that often. Relay for Life, as mentioned by Mr. Fury, is going to be August 12th. It is a whole different event this year, they're at the square, and I just encourage everyone to get out. We have a team set up from the city that's going to be there, so we're looking for, it's a carnival atmosphere, just, you know, encourage everyone to come participate. Another event we've got going on in the square is, of course, the market on the square, it happened this past weekend. It continues to grow, it's everything that I think we envisioned when we first started planning it. We had 60 vendors in June, we had 72 vendors this past Saturday. The whole time, from 10 o'clock on, we had, we had traffic through there. I spent a lot of time walking around, meeting the vendors, talking to them, and they love, they love the setting, and it's been a great event for them, so we're expecting August now to be a little bit bigger. And that'll be on August 26th, and then the final one's on September 9th. We do have Founder's Day that's going to be coming up, that's on July 22nd, and great committee, you know, Derek's been heading that, but we have a lot of people, a lot of residents that have taken active roles in making sure that event is going to happen smoothly, but I encourage you to come out. Parking's going to be crazy, we've got a car show, we'll be serving food to everyone, we've got just, we've got two stages with entertainment, there's just, it's going to be a full day of events going to happen on July 22nd, so I encourage you to come out for that. Again, Mr. Scafidi mentioned, Rock the Park is just really busy right now. We did have Building 429, fantastic band, a whole different level of band than we've really had here. Unfortunately, we got two inches of rain in three hours, which slowed things down, but it didn't, it didn't stop anything. You know, we had, we had 75 people dancing in knee-deep water down in front of the stage. We had to pull them out because of electrical issues, but anyway, they were having fun. So, and then the Pops Orchestra is always a great event, you know, it's a huge turnout every year, you know, just really our safety forces, our service department, you know, I got to see this past weekend, everything from setup to what goes on, and there's just a tremendous amount of work that happens behind the scenes to really make those events run as smooth as they do. So, you know, thanks to all them, the help with that. We've got concerts coming up, so this weekend we've got Post Road, which is a great local band, roots here around Cleveland, I know it's going to be a good turnout for that. We have Desert Highway, which is an Eagles tribute band coming up on the 28th, and then our last concert, which is always a fun, interesting night, Disco Inferno, is on August 11th. So if you've never been to see them, it's just, it's an interesting night, it's a lot of fun, so I encourage you to come out for that. Twins Day, trying to cover a lot of things because we've got a break here coming up on council, but Twins Day's coming up the 4th, 5th, and 6th of August. We've been planning it, looks like everything is moving along, so we're, you know, expecting another huge, huge turnout here in Twinsburg, the town gets kind of taken over. And then the Tuesday before is National Night Out. So National Night Out, we did it last year, we had, it was great, we had about 600 people show up. It's a community police event, it happens around the nation, where different communities basically bring their police officers and their residents together. We actually bring in the township, Reminderville, we have the SWAT team there, we've got some from the Army Reserve, brings in vehicles. It's just, you know, it's a great event. We did last year a Safety Force Challenge, which we're going to be doing again, so we'll have our Police First Fire in the stadium. We just found out today, we are having another K-9 demonstration. The ASO is being retired, however, would like to attack me one more time before he goes out, so they've got a new bite suit that I will be testing out on National Night Out. And if there's any councilman that would like to do that there, they're more than welcome to, but.
How big's the suit?
I don't know. I don't know that it really, I don't know that it really matters, so if you saw my arms from last year, it's, I'm just, I'll get through it, so.
Mayor, what was the date of the night out?
It's August 1st. August 1st from 5 to 8.
Thank you.
This coming Thursday is the ninth anniversary of us losing Officer McTarian, and so at 9:00 a.m. we are going to have a silent, kind of vigil out at his memorial, so anyone's welcome to join in on that. It's a very short event, but just taking a moment of silence just to remember Josh. So, you know, just keep, again, keep his, his family in your prayers, because I know it's a difficult time of year for them. At the end of the week, we do have an outing that basically raises money for his children, college expenses, it's a fund that goes on. I'm not sure if they're sold out yet, generally we sell it out, but you can get in touch with City Hall if you're interested in participating in that. And I believe that's all I have for this evening. We've got some, the department had reports, so, is there anyone, I think, Steve, you're reporting? Come on up.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I'm here for Chief Morgan. Start with the June calls. We're 15% over last year with the calls, we had 219 calls for service. So 19, we're 15% over last year, but EMS is 13%, 31% up in rescue calls, which could be an MVA or any kind of type of typical rescue, that's not EMS or fire, and fire were up 19%. Couple notable events that Tim wanted me to talk about. We had one that lasted a few hours looking for a fire at the Glenwood Line that they searched for, couldn't find, they saw the flames, but by the time they got there, there was nothing, there was no char mark, so chalk it up to whatever, but they, the guys were actually hitting the ground looking for it. Then we had a trauma call where a construction worker put a three-inch nail through his chest with it on, and he's doing fine, expected to make a full recovery. Our guys did a great job, took him to the trauma center. Fire prevention's been busy, not only inspecting, but using the fire extinguisher, trainer, the new laser. the new laser one, and we've just gotten a lot of calls on that, so we're being, we're really busy in that arena. We had nine fire investigations open last month, closed nine, all nine of them. Public education, we did 362 contacts last, last month, which is safety town, could be fire detectors, smoke detectors, or whatever, but we do beat the public quite a bit, and we, I make sure they track it, so I can tell us how much we're doing here. Hydrant flushing's almost done, we did 73 hours hydrant flushing last month, so we're nearly complete with that process, out of the 1,900 hydrants, 1,400 are done, so we look to get that done, and it's kind of a challenge between training and all the calls, you get the guys on a road for a few hours, and they get a call, or they get rained on. Weather warning sirens, they all worked perfectly, this last, last test, so I want to, special thanks to Gary Foot from Public Works to keeping that system up and running, it's a very integral system to us, and we know the importance of it. Currently, going on this weekend, probably in the next, they're installing the mag vehicle exhaust system finally, and that was purchased, the majority was getting paid for through the FEMA grant. And then finally, talk about the CERT team, they've been busy working the Rock the Parks, they did a lot, all day long at the Rutter River Run, they have Twins Days coming up, so, and I want to bring that up, that we're the only, we're the only CERT team besides Copley in Summit County, so we are, we're drawing from Reminderville, Hudson, and we got our first one that wants to come from Macedonia, and I do check with the fire chiefs to make sure they're not starting one, and nobody is, so our team's over 50, something strong now, we're actually hosting the training for Summit County in September, and I'll be one of the instructors, but it's an asset, I talked to somebody from Green, the City of Green, who's interested in starting another team down there, so, the word's starting to spread about the value of CERT, and I just can't say enough about our volunteers and what they do, they were at Building 43, and we had two monitoring the weather, and actually, our CERT trailer got buried with the asphalt back there, the crushed asphalt, but they stuck into it, and it took me a while to get it out after the fireworks from the 4th, or the 4th July concert, but as the Mayor said, and everybody else, I'll echo it, I live right behind there, and I just, it's just a joy to have, it's a, it's a, people don't realize, it's here that don't live here, and you get a lot more people from the outside asking about Rock the Park, since the Rockin' Under the River pulled out, and they have something different down there, so, it's just another asset that we have here, so, entertain, any questions? Great, have a great night.
Thank you.
Good to have you.
Anyone else?
No, I don't think so.
Karen.
Good evening, everyone, just an update, we did receive our first advance distribution for our income tax collection, and for the month, we're up by 5%, and for the year, up by 1%. So I'll give you a full report when you return, but I'll also send you an email as far as our collections, final collections for the month of July. Just wanted to update you, I did send you notification as it relates to the House Bill 40, 49, I just wanted to let you know that Governor Kasich did pass that bill, which means that they have eliminated the throwback provision, I sent you details that was, relates to that, as well as giving the businesses the option of how they file their net profits. So I will keep you updated as those changes, based on that change, we do stand and lose approximately $300,000 in our income tax collection, so I'll update you and let you know how that impacts us additionally, if the numbers do change. Also, I sent out a memo to the department heads to let them know it is time for the 2008 preparation for the budgets, the budget hearings dates have been established, we just need confirmation from Council as far as dates of December, and I'll send you some more updated information as those dates are confirmed. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you.
That's it.
That it? Yeah?
Yes.
Now we have legislation, Ordinance 70, 2017.
An ordinance adopting the tax budget of the City of Twinsburg, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2018, and submitting the same to the county auditor, and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to put Ordinance 70, 2017 on its third and final reading, and declare it an emergency, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Fury, second, discussion?
The reason for the emergency is that the Finance Director wants to get the budget, the tax budget to the county immediately, and the emergency allows to do that.
Anything else? Roll, roll call, please.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Emergency Clause passes 7-0, now I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 70, 2017 as an emergency, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Roden, second, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Ordinance 70, 2017 passes 7-0 as an emergency. Any unfinished business, Mr. Scafidi?
I have not tonight, thank you. Just, everybody have a great summer, we'll be back at the end of August.
Thank you. Mrs. Stoffer.
I have nothing.
Thank you. Mr. Fury.
The gentleman asked the questions about the old school, and how much would it cost to bring it up to code, the numbers that we had looked at over the past several years were between six and eight million to make the building asbestos-free, ADA-compatible, new windows, new heater, new roof, everything, which is not a number that I would be interested in investing, I think Council's spoken on that in the past. As far as the, the turning lanes in the roads, those are state routes, I'm sure that the Mayor will get with the city engineer, but I, we don't have a lot of flexibility on designing state routes in the past, so, anyway, I wish everybody has a healthy and safe summer, and thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Roden.
Thank you. All I want to do, everyone had mentioned Rock the, Rock the Park, or the Cleveland Pops, and this is one of the first times I've been able, based on my schedule, to go, and we had a great time, truly amazed at how great it was, and have heard, but never experienced it myself, and we now are going to make it a family tradition, so kudos to the Rec Department, it was great, that's it, have a good summer.
Thank you. Mr. Steele.
I have gone to the 4th of July thing with the Pops Orchestra the last couple of years, and it's been wonderful, this year, I didn't get a chance, but I did get to see Old Faithful erupt on the 4th of July, so, that was pretty neat. Hope everybody has a great summer for the next three, four weeks, be safe.
Thank you. Mrs. McPherson.
I just had one thought, or two thoughts, one is that since we're not going to be having a meeting for a couple of weeks, if there's anything that comes up, and you need something, if you call City Hall, they will really direct you to the right department, so you don't have to wait and come here, someone's out there to help you, and if you don't know who to contact, also, feel free to call us. And then, something that I keep talking to people in my ward about is, and we don't talk about here, is the Senior Center, and there's a calendar of events, something every day for seniors, and I don't think it gets talked up enough, and I just wanted to put it out there, to take some time and look at the calendar, and that the picnic is August 18th for the seniors, so, they do something every day, and it's just a wonderful asset that we also have in the city that doesn't get talked about enough, so, just want to mention that.
Thank you. Mayor.
Nothing else for me, Steve.
Thank you. Mr. Maestros?
Nothing.
Do we have to do anything with the agenda, since it says Executive Session?
If we could just reflect that, we have the Executive Session, if the minutes can just reflect, we convened that in the end of the work session, and that was, that took place for personnel, I'm not sure if we can convene that for personnel, if that's reflected or not, so, that's it.
So I don't have to amend the agenda?
Not this time, no.
Okay. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Shannon?
At the Relay for Life event, you will have the opportunity to dunk the Mayor in a dunk tank, along with Seth Roden, and anyone else on Council that'd like to sign up? And Joanne, I forgot, Joanne did sign up.
You got me to sign up.
So, that's it.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other business, then this meeting is adjourned.